6:30 PM via Zoom. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. We're going to call the order and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Courtney, if you can do roll call, please.
Yes, Dana Cockens.
Here.
Jessica Jernigan.
Here.
Sheila Murphy. Tim Oderkirk.
Here.
Willem Pango.
Here.
Courtney Stegman here. Amy Bond.
Here.
Thank you. And then the approval of the agenda, did any board members see any changes that needed to be made? Not seeing any reports and updates.
Yep, good evening, everyone. We have a wide variety of items under our report section this evening. To start out, we have a guest joining us. I'd like to introduce you all Scott Mertz. Scott is the Vice President of Academic Affairs and Community Outreach for Mid-Michigan College, and he's here to talk with us this evening about their annexation project. So Scott, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much for inviting me, Superintendent Verliger and the entire board. I appreciate being here. I'm going to show if I can here. Oh, is there any possibility that I could show a, I've got some PowerPoint slides.
Yeah.
It says I am, okay.
Yes, I'm going to make you the host.
Ooh.
Yes, and we'll just do that briefly and then you can change that back when you get done. And I did share, Scott, just so you know, the pamphlet that you sent to me this afternoon. All the board members do have that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So. Can everybody see the screen? Everybody see that? Okay, so. I'm going to say a few things anyway. Essentially, I'm going to, this is going to be brief, but I'm going to share a little bit about Mid, not a, not a ton, but a little bit of background. Most of you are probably pretty familiar with that, so I once spent a lot of time on it. Most of you are probably also familiar with the fact that we had tried to annex the Grashit Isabella RESD in November, and I want to make that point clear because that will become critical in terms of what we're doing this next time. But I wanted to go over some of the results so you can kind of see what they look like. And then generally during these presentations, I get two overriding questions. Number one, what's in it for me? So we will cover that in some detail. And number two, how much is it going to cost me? So we'll, we'll talk about those throughout. Oops, so first off, really annexation is, is nothing more than an invitation to join our district. Mid has been operating in Mount Pleasant for the most part since the start of the college. We started in 1965 and Mid, since that time, has been operating in Mount Pleasant one way, shape, or form. You know, taking from storefront buildings to basements of courthouses all the way through to our current location now. We've been offering classes at Chip Hills, and I wanted to point out Chip Hills because that's one that we did not attempt to annex last time. So that's why I threw that in there this time. But for the most part, we have been here since the start. Last time, we attempted to invite all residents of the Grashit Isabella RESD territory. This time, essentially, it's, it's similar in fashion, although we're doing it on an individual case-by-case basis. So it only applies to residents in Elma, Ashley, Beale City, Breckenridge, Chippewa Hills, Fulton, Ithaca, Mount Pleasant, Shepherd, and St. Louis school districts. For those that don't know, as I alluded to, Mid's founded in 1965 as the 25th community college out of 28. We do have two campuses. Our main one is actually in Harrison, but of course, we have our Mount Pleasant campus on the corner of Somerton and Broadway. And we also have our Pickard Street building, which houses primarily truck driving and non-credit type programs. Our in-district covers the Clare Gladwin RESD territory, including Clare, Harrison, Farwell, Beaverton, and Gladwin schools. We have been serving all of the areas that we're going to be attempting to annex for a number of years. And our focus is traditionally on student learning and community connections, in particular rural student education. While 80% of the students in Michigan are covered by a community college district only, 50% of the geography of the state is covered, leaving wide swaths of Michigan uncovered by a community college district. And that's something we take very seriously. It puts those students at an unfair disadvantage. Whoops, right now, we have the second lowest property tax millage rate in the state. It's 1.2202. It actually just went down a little bit. For those of you that are curious, Jackson is the only one that has a lower millage rate than Mid. And currently, we have an enrollment of about 1,350 students from the annexation territory that we're talking about. Our overall enrollment is about 3,200 or so, but about 13 come from the surrounding areas of Isabella, Grashit, and a little bit in McCosta, Seola counties. For the most part, on the right, that is what the state sort of deems the average, or is the state average of how community colleges are funded, for those that are curious. The state actually, in an ideal world, set it up to be one-third each of tuition fees, state aid, and property tax dollars. As probably you can guess, the state aid piece of the pie is the one that's been shrinking disproportionately to the other two. That's what the state average is. Oddly enough, the state aid for Mid is pretty close to the state average. It's that tuition and fees and property tax dollars that are really out of whack with the rest of the community colleges in the state. We're funded almost two-thirds or just under two-thirds tuition and fees, which is a difficult model to sustain. As I mentioned, we attempted in November to annex the territory itself as one big territory. That means that both proposals, the proposal one, which is, do you want to join Mid's district, along with proposal two, can we assess the 1.2202 mills on your property taxes, had to pass both yes overall throughout the entire district. And if you look at proposal one, almost a two-to-one or over a two-to-one margin, actually are pretty close to it in terms of yes versus no. Proposal two came up 561 votes short to the no. And when you look at the heat map of proposal two and how the voters voted, perhaps not surprisingly, you see the, the red-hot areas in Mount Pleasant and the surrounding areas being overwhelmingly yes. And as it went further south, outside of Elma, which is that red part in Grashit County, was fairly cool in terms of blue with no votes the further we went south. Unfortunately, that meant that because the Southern Grashit voters voted in disproportionate no numbers, the entire region, it didn't pass. And there was some confusion about that. A lot of folks in Isabella County in particular thought, hey, great, it passed. And if you look at the numbers, you're right, Isabella County in both cases, proposal one and proposal two, did in fact pass. But because we attempted annexation by the entire RESD region, it has to pass across the entire region. And that is what led us to our next attempt, which will be on May 4th. We're, we're doing a similar kind of thing with the addition of adding Chippewa Hills. We got a lot of resident questions about, hey, why wasn't it on my ballot? So we added Chippewa Hills and we're attempting to annex each individual school district. It's really a matter of local control. Those school districts now control their fate in terms of Mid's millages without the impact of voters in other areas. That's why we attempted to, to move in this direction. And to be honest, it was heartbreaking for us to see so many residents that passed it and thinking, hey, we've, we're going to get the in-district tuition rate, only to say, you know, unfortunately, that's not how it works. So we're trying again with that, that significant alteration in, in our strategy. In terms of why, I think the most obvious benefits fall on the student, which is, you know, fantastic. There's a 40% difference in our out-district versus our in-district tuition rate. So if it passes in May, the students starting in the fall will be eligible for our in-district rate. Mid is already the top collegiate destination for nine of the 10 school districts that we're attempting to annex. The one that it's not is Fulton, which is much, much closer to my common LCC than us. But even still, we're number two on Fulton's list. The collective savings for an associate's degree for Mount Pleasant students only is just under $2 million. So if a student attends Mid to get an associate's degree, it's a 200, 200, or a $2 million difference that they'll see over the course of two years collectively. We're already serving about 1,200 high school students who do enrollment, and that includes about 30 or so, between 30 and 40, I think, for Mount Pleasant High. And that number, we already charge in-district tuition rate for our dual enrollment partners because we, we understand, being a partner in education, the challenges that K-12 faces budgetarily, just like we do. So we do that as a courtesy because access is critical, and there is no better scholarship than dual enrollment. Of course, thousands of our students transfer from Mid to local colleges and universities, primarily to CMU, but certainly a fair share of Saginaw Valley and Ferris in particular. We had an economic impact study commissioned in the fall of 2019. That study found that Mid students see an average return on their investment of 18.3%, which is far better than the stock market return and far, far better than a savings account return. And the average student who graduates from Mid will see $8,200 more per year compared to those with a high school degree. Certainly, students are lion's share winners of a successful annexation campaign, but they're not the only ones. As a community member, there are also many significant savings and some that are fairly recent, meaning the Michigan Reconnect program. The numbers that I posted here are those students that are eligible for the program. It doesn't mean that they're currently enrolled or that they will enroll. But anybody that is 25 or older that has not completed a college degree is eligible to apply for this program. And this is where it's an interesting intersection with Mid's annexation proposal. Because if they are in-district, then community college tuition is free. If they're out-district, they still certainly can apply for the program. It just means they would have to cover the difference between the in-district and out-district rate. So in terms of, of the governor's 60 by 30 and, and other attempts to, to have a more educated populace, the Michigan Reconnect is a potential game changer for us. And there, as you can see, there's, there's many, many eligible students for it. We also have trained over 4,100 nurses that are operating in the area and 700 health science graduates just from the previous three years. And that includes both credit and non-credit. And if we've learned anything from the pandemic, it's that it is a critical need for frontline healthcare workers. Absolutely critical, and we need to train more of those. And of course, as a community member, they can participate in Mid's trustee elections. Right now, our trustees make up just Clare Gladwin County. There are seven. They're all openly elected, so there's, there's no reserve for certain counties. Anybody in this area can run if annexation passes. Those are community members and students, but even if you're a business owner, over 4,300 Mid alumni live in the area, so it provides a stable, educated populace to draw from in terms of job openings and, and an educated workforce. And the same economic impact study that I commissioned earlier found that for every $1 invested in higher ed, $5.50 was returned to the community by way of spending and housing and all the types of things that Mid students and staff and so on and so forth bring with it. Mid's economic impact on a community every year is about $69 million. And one out of every 43 jobs in Mid-Michigan is supported by Mid and its activities. So significant benefits all the way around. In fact, in summary, this is what our Economic Impact Group had suggested, that Mid is, it creates a significant positive impact on the business community and generates a return on investment to its major stakeholders, which includes students, taxpayers, and society. Couldn't have said it better myself. For those that are interested in what the savings look like, I've already given you Mount Pleasant, but the surrounding areas in total, these are what students would save on an associate's degree over two years, moving from out-district to in-district based on current enrollment figures for each of these areas. So in general, it's about $3.7 million for the Mid-Michigan community that would be saved over two years. Terms of how much it's going to cost, as I've already mentioned, 1.2202 mills. That means for every $1,000 in assessed home value, residents pay, I'm not sure how they factor this, but $1.2202. And that the assessed home value is not your actual fair market home value. It's one-half of your fair market value. So for the average Isabella County resident, that works out to about $69 a year. Or if you're up, if your brain works better to figure out what the monthly cost is, it's about $5.76 per month it would cost. Grashit County, it's a little bit less expensive for those residents because home values are not quite as high. So basically, $69 a year. If you factor it another way, $69 a year, and if, just in one year of in-district versus out-district savings, if a student were to attend Mid for one year and take 12 credits each semester, it would take 35 years at that millage rate to pay back how much you would save in one year for tuition. We have found many, many things during this process. It's been very educational for us, but one thing that we found is an unbelievable level of support from our community, and we are so very thankful. And these are some folks that have either officially endorsed it or have written letters of support. You may notice that very last name on the right-hand column there, a community stalwart. Ms. Verliger has been nice enough to serve on our Friends of Mid campaign, and we're very, very appreciative of that. And we would of course love to have Mount Pleasant School Board added to this, but you know, in the end, that's up to you. I certainly don't want to pressure you because I know there's a lot of factors that play into that. This is what your ballot language is going to look like. This is the exact language that you'll see heading into the ballot booth or filling out your absentee ballot. Both proposals have to pass with yes in order for annexation to occur. As we found out in the last one, proposal one passed with yes, proposal two passed with no. It means, or did not pass, was a no, that means the whole proposal does not pass. If you are interested in more information, you can visit us at midmish.edu/annexation, or you can email me directly at friendsofmidmish@gmail.com, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now or later, whenever you need me to do. So that wraps that up. I'll open it up now for any questions that I can field. I'll be happy to answer anything that you have. Okay, wow, that good.
Sorry, Scott, it takes us a while to find out, unmute button. So my question for you is, and it's pretty general, so what happens if this doesn't pass? I mean, I know that in the funding, right, you are relying on that tuition quite a bit. Can you talk about this just briefly?
I certainly can, yes. I mean, tuition is a, is a delicate balancing act for us because of the amount that we rely on tuition and fees. If we raise it too much, we price ourselves out, and it's no longer competitive. If we don't, then we've, we face budget shortfalls. To be honest, right now, we're, we're fortunate because of some CARES money that has come through, but that's short-term, and we all know that that's short-term. We did unfortunately had to lay off 13 staff members this year, and it's sad anytime you have to lay folks off. But like most organizations, staffing is our number one cost. Makes up the lion's share of our budget. So when we do have to make cuts, those are the cuts where we have to make them. Fortunately for us, the academic side, my, my side, has been largely spared. So that's the good news. We're still, we're still strong with our educational aspect, but service to the student, if we have to make additional cuts, you know, shrinks, and that's unfortunate, but it's a reality of our situation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Scott, so just to reiterate for everybody that's listening and may have voted in the fall election, it's really important that they vote in the spring election, even if this is the only reason that they're out there voting, to make sure that this passes specifically for Isabella County or Mount Pleasant Public Schools, that, you know, obviously, there's not a carryover, anything like that from the fall, but even if they voted, they need to vote again. And, and really, this is specific to our school district.
Absolutely, thank you, Amy, for pointing that out. Yes, it, it is critical that people come out and vote. We're the only thing on the ballot. So we know that this election is going to look much, much different than what the November election looked like. And there might be a tendency for people to, you know, to not get out and vote because of that. But it is critical, and it is absolutely critical, that both are voted yes. Otherwise, whether one's voted down or both are voted down, if they're not both yes, then it fails. So thank you for reminding folks of that. Any other questions? I, I know that Superintendent Verliger has forwarded you some information, a brochure that has much more detailed info. Similar information is on our website, so please feel free to distribute that as, as much as you want. If you have folks that are curious and would like some more information, and you can certainly refer them to me at any time. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely.
Can you give me back the host of the meeting before?
All right.
I would just hate to have you enter a meeting.
All right, hold on a second.
Should be able to click on the dots next to my name.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. There we go. There you go.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, you too. Next on our report is the annual report from the Grashit Isabella Technical Education Center. Mary Kay Voges is here to give us that report. So Mary Kay, thanks for joining us, and I will share my screen so your report comes up.
Thank you for having me. So while we're waiting for that to pop up, for the new members, normally tonight is our culinary students' big night to serve you all a very beautiful, delicious three-course dinner. I'm so sorry that can't happen, and I know the kids really enjoy that. Their competition is not looking very good. It isn't going to even happen nationally, so I don't mean to rub that in, but we'll make it up to you next year. We will definitely serve you well and as a thank you for all you do for us. So February is CTE month, and in the month of February, we honor our students, showcase them particularly in one way with our National Technical Honors Society. This year, we honor, will be honoring 69 new inductees from both Mount Pleasant and from Elma, and 14 returning seniors. So the students show outstanding commitment to their programs, and they are nominated by their students in ways of outstanding character, skill development, leadership, and initiative, honesty, responsibility, things of that nature. Normally, we have this event after our open house, the first Thursday of the month of February. And obviously, that can't happen, so we're kind of holding right now, putting it on a pause. We do want to honor these students in some way, hoping that maybe as spring comes, maybe we can do something even outside. We haven't quite decided yet. The kids know that they are in, but we're holding to honor them in some manner, close to what we normally do. At the bottom of this particular slide is just the listing of our 20 different programs, 16 of which are from here at Mount Pleasant, and six are at our Elma location. There are two programs that kind of cross over each other in that they're offered in both areas or both locations, one being our health science, our SENA program, and then the other one being our automotive program, so students can take those at either place. So we, I recently have two of our programs, our machine trades program and electronics program. We had a retirement and then a very last-minute resignation that we couldn't fill the instructor position. So just here a couple of weeks ago, I advertised it statewide. So I'm hoping that we can find some really good candidates to fill those positions and bring those programs back in the fall. So machine trades and electronics. Because we couldn't have our open house or gather as normal, we put together a virtual version. So thanks to our digital media instructor, Pat Anstott, and his students, we were able to film every program that includes students talking about their experiences in each of their programs. So the big QR code that you see there is going to take you to our YouTube channel. So it'll take you right to the virtual open house. Please take a moment to look. The kids have done a really nice job, and you may have already looked at it, and I'm pretty proud of them. When you do click on that QR code, it will take you not only to this virtual open house, but also there's a couple of other things that is in our YouTube channel, and it will continue on as the students progress in the year, that just gives you an overview of the tech center as well. So at the bottom here is the example of our postcard that just went out. So some of you may have received one in the mail. Normally, our postcard card goes out to invite people to our open house and to our NTHS ceremony. This one is basically a promotional this time around, but it's that same QR code. We've had a lot of calls already. It just went out, I think, last Thursday. So we've had calls, I've had numerous emails asking about, you know, can my child take this course and when? And so that's the name of the game. We want our name out there, so it's working. So we sent 5,200 postcards to every sixth through 12th grader in our Grashit Isabella County area. So pretty neat there. The next slide is talking about Perkins Five. Perkins Five funding, we're held accountable to something called core performance indicators. And core performance indicators, there are seven measures of student achievement. And those include reading, math, science, graduation rates, non-traditional enrollments, certifications. And what I'm, what I can report tonight, which is our follow-up reports, we are required by the state to contact every graduate the year after they graduate. So this is a total of 381 students that graduated last June, and we have to ask them a series of questions to come up with these green dots here at the top. Of those 381 students, 4.2% are part-time or full-time active military duty. We were able to contact 93.2% of those 381. This is a huge task. We're talking about seven weeks of, you know, daytime, but a lot of nights and a lot of weekends to try to find out, you know, where are these kids going? Are they're using their skills that they obtained in a CTE course or, or not? Or whatever they are doing, perhaps the military. 66.2% are currently employed. 61.1% are continuing their education, either at a college, university, or a post-secondary facility. And 25.6 of those students are continuing education but are not employed. The next slide is talking about our enrollment. So the bar graph at the top there shows our enrollment from school year 16, 17 to current. And we are down 98 students this year. So we're at that 959 area. And to give you a better grasp of, you know, who's going where, 683 of those students come here to Mount Pleasant, and that leaves the 276 are at the Elma location. The bottom area is talking about our consortium program. So all, I'll just use the top one as the current, the 2021 school year. Of the 3,487 total students that could take or participate in a CTE course, that 959 students, we are at 27.5% of the students that could take a course are taking course. So we were steady for the past four years at around 29, 30%, and we've dropped some. And you know, some of it's unknown reasons, but I know a lot may have to do with our machining program and our electronic program, which was very popular. Those numbers aren't there. We tried to give them their second choices, but of course, they're going to choose maybe a different elective or another virtual option for them. Next slide is talking, the next couple of slides are talking about our co-op and work experience opportunities. So here you have our 18 students that are in a co-op situation where they're currently working. To be eligible for co-op, you have to have completed six segments, which is about half of the CTE program. They have to have a core, yeah, thanks, Jennifer, I'll keep going, yeah, go back to the one, yeah. They have to have correlated coursework. So for example, the very top one, Chloe Campbell, she's one of the co-ops in my office, and her coordinating coursework would be business management. And when you're in a co-op, that allows you a two-hour release time to go to your job. You are recommended by a teacher, so you have to show that you are responsible and dependable and things that you would normally want in any work-related position. They have to have a C or better. So we are constantly looking and wanting to have community partners that are willing to take our students to give them that real-world experience. So the next slide, it's a much smaller amount this year in work experience. But work experience, very similar to co-op, but it, they also have to have some type of a course that prepared them. It doesn't have to be now, they don't have to have the corresponding course right now, but sometime in their high school career, and this gives them a one hour of release time. So it's a short little list this year for reasons, I'm not sure. COVID probably is a main culprit for many things. Next slide. Next slide. This is the time of year when we report a lot of regional competitions, and because of, you know, the darn COVID, a lot of things aren't happening like they should. But in this case, Business Professionals of America have had their regional competition, virtual, of course, everything is still virtual. Regionals were January 6th through the 13th, so everything had to be videoed and sent in, and of that, 43 of our students are now, right now, doing dress rehearsals actually for state competition. So again, it's going to be virtual. March 13th through the 20th is when the BPA state competition is happening. A couple more things happening or in the process of our HOSA, our Health Occupation Students are planning for a regional event, and our region with CTE is the Mount Calm and Ionia Areas in Grashit Isabella. That's our, our region, and each of those tech centers also have a health science program. So they're working together to bring a regional event onboard in somewhat of a narrowed-down events from what they normally do. And I think right now, they're looking at careers in health, sciences, diseases, and educational plans. And then I noted at the beginning about the Pro Start, the culinary competition. The national has been canceled. Our Michigan chapter is looking at doing a virtual, but we're still waiting to hear about the process and that. So that's all we can report on competitions. Normally, we have a lot going on at this time. Next slide. We have a longstanding relationship with WCZY or our My 1043 radio station in that they, they're very CTE-friendly and like to highlight students as much as they can. So each month, students are nominated by their teacher, of course, outstanding. They're advertised for the month. The change with this is that the listeners must go to their website and vote for these students. So all month long, they are giving them radio recognition. So we have our October, November, and December students up there, our Mount Pleasant students. Our January is an Alma student, and just earlier today, they announced our February Student of the Month, again, a Mount Pleasant student. Bennett Cox won our February, and so now March is up. So we've got four students, I believe it is, from Beale City and Mount Pleasant. So if you feel the urge to go vote, please do. It's a neat thing, so they get some type of a prize package. They always get a plaque. It's just another thing that highlights awesome kids. So we love that. Okay, next slide. More and more, our focus is on offering certifications to students, and with the new Perkins Five funding, this is now something that we're held accountable to. So it not only helps build credibility, but also confidence with industry-recognized credentials. So you see here, our list is much smaller from last. It's always happening in the third try. You know, they've got their skills down, they are ready to sit for their exam or their certification. So we have a total of 61 certs that were earned last, last spring in culinary arts, machine trades, small engines, and welding. And I, even though it's a lower number, because we normally average about 150 to maybe 160 each year, I'm really proud of the fact that they did these cert earnings during our shutdown and virtually. So this makes me feel good, even though the number is 100 less than what we normally do. The programs that had to complete certification, or excuse me, clinical hours, such as like our CNA, our Certified Nurse Assistance, and our Cosmetology students, they were pretty much put on hold because you can't sit for your exam unless you have your hours. So we're still playing a little bit of catch-up from last spring for those areas. Next slide. This is the seventh year that we have had our CTE village, and we are ever so thankful to all of our Grashit Isabella taxpayers for this and the ability to purchase equipment with village funds. You see our seven programs listed there that were fortunate to, of $133,000, acquire these pieces of equipment. We have a superintendent oversight committee that approves recommendations based on safety, upgrades, industry standards, things of that nature. The RSD sets aside $200,000 each year that has to be shared with Alma and Mount Pleasant, and the principal of the Alma programs and myself, we, it's not always the same programs. We look at the needs, and it's always different programs and different types of equipment. Sometimes we, I mean, $133,000 is pretty awesome, but in our list there, we've got some pretty expensive labs. The digital media lab was a very large portion this year, but we try to be diligent with who gets what and always keeping safety at the top. Next slide. This is, this is pretty neat. Over the last year, our construction state trade students were able to put a new spend on a build, and they built a tiny house. So this unique structure, even though small, it's pretty, pretty well thought out. It's a 12 by 16 structure with a 12 by eight loft area on the top. In the photos of the one that's pretty much completed, it doesn't show where that gable goes, but at the very top, if you're looking at the photo with the door at the front facing, on the right-hand side is where that gable goes, and that's part of what would be the bedroom to that home. It's neat. The students participated in the framing and the sheeting, the wiring of electrical outlets, lights, the installation of the windows and the doors. They made the custom kitchen cabinet shelves, and they had to build this so that when they sold it, the roof could come off so that it could be transferred, transported to a location and also fit in our building bay. So it was quite a feat to figure all that out. But the tiny house was sold on public auction this past fall, and now is a holistic office space for a mental health practice in Saginaw. So the woman who is having her practice in there is just thrilled for this. So I can't wait to see it fully finished because it's not even quite done yet, but our future plans are to go back to a traditional build. So our plan for the fall is to build a residence like we normally do. This past summer, we hosted, this was virtually, of course, but our interior design instructor, Megan Williams, hosted a CMU interior design student, and she completed her internship with her in the way of preparing construction documents for this home. So we're talking approximately 1,300 square feet. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath, single-story with a full basement and a two-car garage that we're planning to build on the last piece of property that we own on Abbey Lane. So that's in the works to come to fruition starting next fall. Back to what we used to be doing. Next slide. Students have the opportunity to earn college credit in the way of articulation, and we have agreements with 16 different post-secondary partners. You see their logos there, that offer anywhere from two to 12 credits depending on the program and completion. Our counselor is the one that evaluates the segments completed and whether or not the students qualify, so she pulls these students in starting third try, so it'll happen quite soon here, to help them fill out the paperwork and go forward to get those credits that they earned in the class that they had here at GITC. So on an average, we will have around 30 students that can apply and earn around 150 credits. That's about average. Last year, along with everything else, down, six students earned 24 credits last year. So that will definitely bounce back up again, I have no doubt. We continue to work with colleges to have as many agreements as we possibly can. Right now, we're working with Central again. We also have some with Central already, but we're working now with the health professions and particularly our, the athletic training department over there to see what we can work with our health sciences areas. So it's pretty exciting to be able to offer so many things to kids. So with that, that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
You guys are doing a wonderful job, Mary Kay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's pretty fun to see them soar. You know, a lot of the kids, this is, this is what makes them stay in school, and I love to offer that. It's pretty rewarding all the way around. Thank you.
It's also nice to see how your programming ties with Mid-Michigan's programming, so you have a natural transition to more advanced certifications or trainings tied to what you're doing in the tech center.
Absolutely, yes, definitely.
Great, well, thank you very much, Mary Kay. We appreciate your updates.
Yeah, thank you. I promise a good dinner next year, okay?
Yes, we'll look forward to that. Next, we have one new policy. It'll be our first reading with Linda.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have what is called Emergency Temporary Telecommunicating Policy. It's 8450.05, and this policy acknowledges our efforts to allow a virtual work option when appropriate and when possible. As you know, this often depends on individual teacher circumstances, and we have to offer this to more than just teachers. But considering the state of our return-to-learn plan, even when there are situations that have required quarantine, we discuss with individuals whether or not they can continue to work from home. So this just kind of honors our emergency plan to allow working remotely when possible, when appropriate, depending on the ability of the individual to provide their work to us virtually, if that makes sense. So it's a first reading. Let me know if you have any questions. This is considered an emergency temporary policy. And I can go right into PSC if you would like. Our PSC team met on February 4th. The high school presented a very creative idea about how to offer a world languages elective to our high school students that are part of the moderately or cognitively or mildly cognitively impaired classes. And so this is kind of a unique opportunity for those students to get a high school elective, not necessarily the full foreign language requirement, but an opportunity for them to participate in this elective. So we will give you a more formal presentation regarding that very soon, and we think it's a natural extension of the exposure that students get in the middle school when they take the world languages class in the middle school. And we discovered that some of those students in the moderately and mildly cognitively impaired program may miss out on that opportunity when they're passing through the middle school at that time. And Dana was there, and we talked a lot about social studies, and we formally initiated the charge to the Social Studies Task Force to officially review all the new standards and investigate their curriculum and any material needs. So they are actively working on that. I know, I think the high school team has, has already met, and they're examining their curriculum, and so we're looking forward to their presentation. And finally, this isn't necessarily a PSC update, but we do have kindergarten kickoff right around the corner. Each building will be welcoming in families socially, as we socially and can appropriately distance and welcome them to the buildings. And then we will also be working on our final PSC report as usual before the year wraps up in May. So we're keeping busy, virtually. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Linda. The next item on our report is just an opportunity for board members to discuss any updates or experiences from the MASP Winter Institute. I know Amy attended some programming there, maybe a couple of other board members might have also, so just an opportunity to catch up on that.
I did, I get to go to the board president class, the CBA class that was offered on Saturday, and it was just a really great experience. I was able to take in and learn a lot of different things. It sounds like there is an additional kind of two other courses that'll take on further opportunities and that I hope to take in the future, but I really appreciate having the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Does any other board member want to share their experiences from the Winter Institute? Or, I don't know, I know a couple of you all did the CBA 101 class that maybe wasn't through the Winter Institute. Okay, hearing none, we will keep moving through the report. The next item is the draft Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. In your board pack of this evening, you do have a draft of that statement, and I know our board members have looked at it a couple of different times. I did also share this statement with Alice Jo and with Melissa Isaac to get some feedback on just this morning, so I know they haven't had a chance necessarily to get back with this yet, but I was hoping that we could look at the statement, talk about any edits or anything we might have. I'd like to be able to implement this, the reading of this statement at the beginning of every meeting, but I certainly want to make sure that we have the support of Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe before we begin that process. So I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions about what we've put together?
I just want to say that I'm really excited about this, and I would like to thank you for bringing this to the board.
Dan, why don't you take a minute and read it?
Okay, sure. So it says, "The Mount Pleasant School, Mount Pleasant Public Schools would like to acknowledge that we are here on beautiful ancestral lands of the Nishnabe people and the Saginaw Chippewa Indian Tribe who continue to be our neighbors and partners. In the proud spirit of collaboration and celebration in both languages, we say boo zu and welcome." Did I say that right, Alice Jo?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did, Jen. It's beautiful. I have not yet been able to present it to full council. We have a regular session tomorrow. We are doing it virtually because we kind of got shut down due to COVID, we had a little outbreak, so we will probably, I'll just present it. It's beautiful. I love it. So thank you. It's well thought out.
Well, and know that we would welcome any suggestions, edits, anything that tribal council has to say. We definitely want this to be an expression of our gratitude of our partnership, and so if you could communicate that, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. What I love about it, it's very short and sweet and to the point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
In a nutshell, yeah.
Alice Jo, it's so great to have you with us.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. I love it. I'm glad I'm finally being able to do the Zoom stuff. I feel like a big celebrity now.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about the Land Acknowledgement
I'd just like to say that I do appreciate it. I think it's a great statement to have, even not just at the board meetings, but in our schools. So as our, as our community of students and staff and even families come into the school to share what we're feeling and how we feel with our partners and our partnership with the tribe and the history of our, of our neighborhood, of our community. I think it's a nice piece, and I agree with Alice Jo. It's short and it's very poignant, so it's more meaningful in that way.
All right, well, thank you all very much. The last item under reports and updates is just to acknowledge correspondence that we've received. And Amy, I don't know, do you want to acknowledge that for us?
Sure, we have received correspondence from Kristin Newbecker, Heidi Wood, and Sarah Hick. The board has had the opportunity to read all of those letters, and responses have been, have been conducted.
And that's all under our reports and updates section for this evening.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. First, we have the approval of the minutes from the February 15th, 2021 regular meeting. Is anyone?
移動
Yeah, great.
Second.
Okay, so that was Tim for first, and Willie for second. Okay, can you do roll call?
Yep. Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willim Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes.
Okay, that unanimously passed. Next, that puts us to new business.
Our first item under new business this evening is a resignation that I will turn over to Linda.
Yes, we are very sad to have to honor the resignation of Kaylee Vanderbahn. Fortunately, she's staying with us through the end of the school year. However, her husband has just finished medical school, and they're off to quite a, quite a new adventure back to where she and her husband grew up. So with much regret, we would like the board to honor her resignation.
No move with much regret.
Yes, thank you. And then we do have a new hire, Abby McConan. Sorry.
Second, second.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so that was Tim and then Wileen or Willeen, sorry. And then do we need to do a roll call now? Okay, so Courtney.
Dana Cockens?
Locked in, yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes, with thanks.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes, and we're gonna miss her.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes, thank you very much for your years of service. It unanimously passes.
And now we have a new hire. Our team recently interviewed Abby McConan as a new speech pathologist, and we'd like to welcome her aboard in early April.
Is there a motion to hire Abby McConan?
Before, oh, sorry. Linda, can you tell us a little bit about her, please?
Um, let me pull up. Abby is joining us with a lot of speech therapy experience with some of our elder care communities. And Stephanie Kelly and myself interviewed her recently, along with the help of Beth McGregor and Tracy Wood. And we really enjoyed hearing from Abby, and we reached out to several of her references, both on and off of her resume. And we were very, she comes highly recommended recommended to us. And in fact, she actually had to give 30 days notice. That's why her her hire date is 30 days out there for April 5. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions about Abby? Is there a motion to hire Abby?
So moved.
Second.
So that was Dana, and then a second by Courtney?
Yes.
Thank you. Courtney, can you do roll call?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes, welcome. Thank you for coming to the community.
Next on our agenda, we have another exciting donation. This is a second donation this year from Staples. They have donated 442 care packages to our district containing classroom supplies. It's an amazing donation. The supplies are binders, pencils, pens, staplers, crayons, folders, hand sanitizers. And the most amazing thing is Staples is still collecting supplies right now if you go there to donate to us again. So this evening, we ask that you accept the care packages with an estimated value of $2,210 with our sincere appreciation.
Is there a motion to accept the care packages?
No moves.
Second.
Tim, and then we lean. Courtney, can you please do roll call?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes, thank you very much. So that unanimously passes.
Next, we have in your board packet, a memo regarding the letter of agreement between the Mount Pleasant Public Schools and the Mount Pleasant Community Education Association. This is our last association that has negotiated the 1.5% wage increase. If you remember, back in our February meetings, we approved these increases for all of our other bargain groups. So we just recently signed the letter of agreement with this group. And we're asking this evening that you ratify the attached tentative agreement for the 1.5% wage increase for the Mount Pleasant Community Education Association.
So moved.
Second.
Jessica, and then Willeen. Courtney, go ahead and do roll call.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Amy Bond, yes. That unanimously passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So once we wrap that up, all district employees all across the board will have received the 1.5% wage increase wage increase. I'm sorry, that does include all of our at will employees as well. So next, you have two student reinstatement recommendations from our student reinstatement committee. First is student S2, 2019, 2020. And that student was suspended by our Board of Education on January 6 of 2020. The 180 school days has passed. She petitioned the student reinstatement committee to return. There are some things that are still in flux as she's trying to get pieces back together. So we are recommending that she can return to the Mount Pleasant Public Schools. We would like her return to the WAY program using the online only program until she can show continued academic success and then be able to transition in more of our face to face programs.
So moved.
Thank you, Dana.
Seconded.
Dana, and then Jessica?
And I should just say so that everyone is clear, our student reinstatement committee is made up of myself, Amy Bond, Dana Cockens, and then in these cases, the school administrators from the buildings where the students would attend.
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes, unanimously passes.
The next reinstatement recommendation is for student S1, 2020, 2021. And if you remember, this was a little bit of a different situation where we actually use the reinstatement committee for disciplinary action in the fall. And now revisiting that after we recommended that this student stay in the Oilers Online Program for the second trimester of this school year. The student and her mother petitioned to return to face to face programs beginning in third trimester. So you can see from the information there that was presented, our student reinstatement committee is recommending that we allow this student to return for third trimester into our face to face programs beginning March 9.
Is there a motion to accept the student?
So moved.
Second.
Dana, and then we lean?
Dana Cockens?
Yes.
Jessica Jernigan?
Yes.
Tim Oderkirk?
Yes.
Willeen Pengel?
Yes.
Courtney Stegman, yes. Amy Bond?
Yes, unanimously passes.
Thank you.
And next is the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda or non agenda item.
So I would just remind our community members that are with us this evening, if you would like to make comment before the board, if you will raise your virtual hand, I will enable talking and allow you to do so. Laura, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Well, I'm just so pleased to see you all. And Alice Jo Ricketts, what the heck's going on here? Nice to see you. And super happy to hear about land acknowledgement and Tim's comment about having it be part of what happens in schools. Oh, may I speak it in my school? Oh, may I speak it in my school? Oh, thank you. Mi guey.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anyone else from the community that would like to make a public comment this evening? I'll turn it back over to you, Amy.
Thank you. Okay, next that comes up the Board of Education discussion. So if there's anything that the board wants to bring up or talk about now, it's the time to do so.
I'd like just to thank Mary Kay. I had a chance to watch the videos from that the students had done. They were incredibly professional. I was very impressed. Many of the things that you do at the CTE Center is that G I Tech is very professional. So thank you for that. And I'm very excited for the BPA. I'm a big BPA parent for many years. And it's exciting to see that 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 tradition continue of excellence in BPA. So thank you. And thank you, everyone in the in the G I Tech for all of their great work that they're doing with our students. I see what it does to students as they grow older and go into the real world and take their different paths. Then it's a very powerful experience. So thank you.
Is there anything else? Or does anyone have anything else they'd like to say? All right, not seeing anything. I would like to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.